Shadow Hills Magnet Academy Student Performance, Dr. Askeer.
Yes, it is once again my pleasure to introduce the Principal of Shadow Hills Magnet Academy, Dr. Spates, who will introduce her performance this afternoon.
All right, at this time, I would like to introduce you to the amazing Shadow Hills Cheer Squad.
Yeah, let's give another hand.
Yeah, let's give another hand. Thank you, Mr. Velador.
I want to thank the school for giving me a brand new path. And what about the teachers? Let's give them a nice applause with teachers. I'm sure the audience and my board, I know you felt the energy. You guys have a lot of great energy. Keep up the good work. We're proud of you and thanks for being here tonight, okay? Big applause, Aline.
Shadow Hills in the house!
All right, Item D, Accountability Progress Report, Shadow Hills Magnet Academy, Mr. Kanga.
At this time, I would like to call Dr. Krishna Spates to the podium. She's there already. Good job, Dr. Spates. But also, I'd like the audience to look toward my right to see Shadow Hills Bulletin Board highlighting all the wonderful programs that they are offering. Go Falcons!
All right, good evening. Board President Hunt, Student Board Member Michael Acosta in Falcon, Trustees and Superintendent Dr. Maldonado. Before I begin, I would like to acknowledge members of the Shadow Hills community and the audience. Please give them a round of applause as they stand. I am fortunate to be supported by two future principals, Mr. Hiram Jeru and Mrs. Hampton, Mrs. Mindy Hampton. Mrs. Hampton is here with us in spirit tonight, and like Mr. Jeru, she is a powerhouse at Shadow Hills. We are building relationships with students, helping students build connections with one another, and working to ensure our families feel and understand that this is their school. Every child, every family, every certificated employee, every classified employee belongs at Shadow Hills. We are all here on purpose and for a purpose. This evening, I invite you to get to know Shadow Hills through the lens of what we call MTSS, or Multi-Tierred System of Support, which is simply educator speak for, we look at the whole child. As we work to implement the Palmdale Promise, high intellectual achievement, building on student strengths, cultures, and languages, as well as integrity and community. MTSS calls us to look at a child through three lenses, or pillars if you will. Social, emotional, academic, and positive behavior. This is why our focus this year is increasing belonging as the pathway to improving student outcomes. Before we begin our journey, a few operational definitions. Social, emotional. Shadow Hills faculty and staff know that social, emotional skills are not simply soft skills, or the touchy-feely stuff. In fact, we would argue that social, emotional skills are foundational to student success, and the neuro-research science backs us up. Neuroscience indicates that positive social connections in middle school significantly enhance student learning by creating a safe environment that promotes brain plasticity, allowing for better information processing and retention, while also triggering the release of beneficial neurochemicals like oxytocin, which fosters feelings of belonging and reduces stress, thus improving cognitive function and engagement in learning. Academics, student learning outcomes, and campus climate in this context refers to positive student behavior. Pillar one, social, emotional. We have already hosted four of thirteen teacher-led and created community engagement events. Because of the Shadow Hills teachers, our caregiver and family engagement numbers have skyrocketed this year. Nine hundred and fifty-eight members of our community have attended four events this school year. A special thank you to Ms. Brown for her leadership. That's a big deal, you guys. Our journey began when twenty-one members of our team attended the Breakthrough Leadership Conference at the University of Southern California. We were able to identify a common challenge, then learned from researchers, successful sitting and retired superintendents, to come up with a plan of action to respond to our common challenge, which was increasing belonging. At Shadow Hills, capturing kids' hearts is not a program or something we do, it is who we are. Each day, as an example, students in Mrs. Johnson's class lead good things, while Mrs. Doncor greets her students at the door with care and enthusiasm. This video was recorded August sixteenth, and I may not be known as the Principal Paparazzi, and this was a covert recording.
Ani Alessandro, good morning! Askeer, good morning! Wait, wait, wait. Maria, no. Jaylee, good morning, Jaylee!
But this is only one example of many that are not shown, that demonstrate the care our entire faculty and staff show students each day. Our data indicates, as you will later see, we are on the path to becoming a capturing kids showcase school.
Ani Alessandro!
Dr. Burns has built and leads our award-winning counseling program. She pushes into classrooms each month to teach students lessons such as anti-bullying, managing their emotions, and resiliency, just to name a few topics. Our faculty and staff lead thirty-three clubs. Twelve of the clubs are specifically designed to provide students with a safe space to build connections with their teachers and their peers, which builds their social, emotional skills. Sports are a powerful vehicle to develop student's social, emotional skills. You can see Mr. Richard Benitez modeling and talking to his students about having class, sportsmanship, and allows them opportunities to build their confidence, and even takes time to provide one-on-one mentoring when needed. Yet, this is not unique to one coach. Mr. Lewis Benitez, Coach Torgerson, Coach Morgan, and Coach Rafelt follow the same practice. At Shadow Hills, we know that students are not giving us a hard time, they are having a hard time. We are in our second year with implementing Tier Two and Tier Three supports using our RISE Team Process, a process that centers students' strengths and assets, multiple feedback sources, including how the students are experiencing us as adults in a school. We then develop a positive plan using the vast campus resources to help them succeed. Pillar two, academics. At Shadow Hills, our focus is engineering and design. Mr. Vander Zee developed a new elective course for Shadow Hills eSports. He is also our eSports coach. This Saturday, our team was undefeated during all three rounds, but we came in second place during the championship, but we are extremely proud of our team and coach. Yes. In this photo, Mr. Vander Zee gave students an engineering task to help them build positive connections with one another at the beginning of the school year to begin their learning journey together. As we focus on increasing belonging as the pathway to improving student learning outcomes, we are hyper-focused on high intellectual achievement. We've contracted with Corwin to engage in intensive professional development focused on teacher clarity. We are re-examining the California Common Core standards with fresh eyes and looking for opportunities to support math, English language arts, and science across disciplines. Dr. Ross visits our campus almost monthly to meet with our faculty to review digital resources that can support teacher planning and their instruction aligned to the California Assessment of Student Progress and Performance. Our literacy coach, Dr. Musumichi, meets with a select group of teachers from our instructional leadership team to discuss and support their pedagogical practices. This year, teachers designed eight new elective courses to heighten student engagement that are aligned to our faculty's interests and the needs of our community. This year, we've added Math Puzzles, a course designed to accelerate student learning in sixth grade, Latin X Heritage, Latin X History Projects, Black History Projects, Farm-to-Table, and Zoology. In the photo, top right, you'll see Ms. Brown's Design Art Class, ready to use their new skills to create posters that reflect the Shadow Hills RISE expectations. The artwork is always hung on our bulletin boards for our community to enjoy and learn from. In the photo on the bottom right, students and Ms. Students in Ms. Torgerson's eighth-grade Honors English Class did a mock trial based on Edgar Allan Poe's "The Tell-Tale Heart." In the photo on the bottom left, students in Dr. Wilson's SDC class formed two hot cocoa businesses, wrote business plans, developed recipes, then sold their hot cocoa during our recent cookie decorating event. Of the thirty-three clubs led by our certificated and classified staff, twenty are focused on academics. You'll see in the top left, Mr. St. Louis leads math tutoring in the morning. In this particular photo, there were forty-seven students at school at seven-thirty in the morning. There weren't enough seats to contain the students, and I think they were a little irritated at me as I was moving around the room taking photos, but completely engaged in learning. Our community asked for it, and we delivered. Shadow Hills once again has a library. Ms. Carrez, our librarian, with the help of our facilities team, Mr. Soriano, Mr. Frith, Mr. Mendoza, and Mrs. Solis worked all summer to reassemble our library. We are thrilled to welcome an entire, brand-new Special Education Department, but three special-day class teachers, Dr. Wilson, Ms. Medina, and Ms. Peguyo. You will notice one of our nominal Special Education Instructional Assistants on the top right, who is close to clearing her credential. Our team is engaged in professional development work with LECO to implement project-based learning to engage our students and heighten their learning experiences. Because of our awesome faculty and our brand-new Special Education Team, that includes Dr. Veray, Dr. Wilson, Ms. Wilson, Ms. Peterson, Ms. Peguyo, Mrs. Medina, Mr. Torres, Ms. De Reyes, and our new Program Specialist, Ms. Moran, with the guidance and support of our Assistant Principal, Mrs. Hampton, we have exited seven students from Special Education altogether, or moved them from a more restrictive program to general education. And all of those students are Latin X and African-American boys. That's a big deal. Most recently, we had a student who reads at, who just exited, we finished his IEP today, reading at an eleventh-grade level, outperforming his peers in math. One student changes generations, and now that student can be on track in high school to attend college if that's his choice. At Shadow Hills, we know our students are brilliant. To help them imagine what their future can look like, we've launched the RISE Guest Speaker Series to provide them with an opportunity to see reflections of themselves in others, to let them know that success is not linear, and despite how your life begins, you can achieve your college and career dreams. Thank you, Dr. Maldonado, for kicking off our RISE Guest Speaker Series. Most, yes, thank you. Thank you. Most recently, students got to learn how to, available careers in the professional soccer industry, and one of the guest speakers was a Shadow Hills alum, Anai Duran. During the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, let's look at some data. ELA took a five percent dip. However, expect a significant improvement in our ELA scores for twenty-four, twenty-five as our entire faculty is currently engaged in Tier One instructional professional development focused on teacher clarity. Our team across disciplines is looking at our student learning data and on our LPMs to determine which ELA standards we can all teach to improve our students' ability to understand grade-level standards. Of the eight new electives we've created, six are language-intensive and designed to provide students with increased opportunities to learn the Common Core standards. In a two-year comparison of students who were tested at Shadow Hills both years, there was a seventy percent Lexile growth, which means three hundred and forty out of four hundred and eighty-four students improved their Lexile score. That is a big deal. We experienced a two percent increase in math scores. To continue to improve student learning outcomes, our entire department offers tutoring before and after school. Additionally, we've created a fun math elective, which I referenced earlier, to accelerate learning for our sixth-grade students. And again, our electives are looking at how we can incorporate math across disciplines. In a two-year comparison of students who were tested at Shadow Hills both years, there was a seventy-two percent quantile growth, which means three hundred and forty-seven out of four hundred and eighty-five students improved their quantile score. Yes. With regard to science, we saw a decrease in three percent from twenty-two, twenty-three to twenty-three, twenty-four. However, we've developed two new science electives to explicitly teach science standards, zoology and farm-to-table. Additionally, a few of our elective teachers are also exploring the idea of embedding science standards into their elective courses. With regard to ELD, Shadow Hills went from green on the California dashboard to blue under the leadership of Mrs. Doncor, and with the support from our entire faculty. Shadow Hills has also emerged as green on the dashboard for English learner suspensions. At this time, I would like to introduce you to future principal, but currently one of my assistant principals, Mr. Jeru.
Thank you, Dr. Spates. Through the lens of MTSS, the third pillar is positive behavior, but our purposes, for our purposes today, we're naming it Campus Climate. And at Shadow Hills, Campus Climate is about creating an environment where we do not have to issue behavioral referrals or suspend. Students go to school, to every class, on time, and they want to come to a school that is clean, beautiful, and maintained well. Well, this photo captures the fun from our first-over-ever homecoming week organized by Mrs. Johnson and Mr. Lewis Benitez. We would like to thank the Board of Trustees, Superintendent Dr. Maldonado, Chief Business Officer, Dr. Yefandu, and the Director of Maintenance and Operations, Suzanne Stilo, for our refreshed facilities. We have a really great facility now. Students at Shadow Hills step up to lead, and the students pictured all, if you guys see it on the picture, all completed applications to be the student member on the Board of Trustees. Currently, one of our own student, Mr. Michael Acosta, there you go, is our student trustee. And another Shadow Hills student will take the seat next for the 2025 school year as well. Well, Ms. Brown's yearbook students stepped up to become our marketing team. Thank you for the wonderful job. For Month One and Month Two and Month Four, Shadow Hills had the best attendance rate out of all the comprehensive middle schools. This is a big deal. We appreciate, yep. Right up. We appreciate the hard work of an entire faculty and staff are doing to ensure students want to come to school each day, and work of our student engagement advocate, Mrs. Morgan Stone, and our attendance clerk, Mrs. Beruman, and our independent study coordinator, Dr. Musumichi. Thank you for all your hard work. You're now looking at our campus dashboard. To monitor our progress, we organized our campus climate data into a dashboard to view trends, effectively respond to the needs of our campus, and inform our future planning. We're proud that Month One and Month Two, Shadow Hills had the highest attendance rate out of all the comprehensive middle schools. We took a dip in Month Three, but the data served as an opportunity to reflect and plan forward. We expected a marked increase in Month Four, and we achieved it per the report released just yesterday. That's a big deal. We had the three out of four highest. And once again, in Month Four, Shadow Hills had the highest attendance rate out of all the comprehensive middle schools. The overall positive trend continues at Shadow Hills this year, even with seventeen new members of our faculty, that includes me also, that decreased the number of veteran faculty. You can see the results of our entire team's combined effort and focus on academics, social, emotional support, and campus climate. We're making progress towards creating an environment where we do not have to suspend and submit behavioral referrals because students are meeting their expectation, their teachers' and schools' expectation, and most importantly, students enjoy coming to school each day. Shadow Hills jumped from red to yellow on the California dashboard for suspensions. Two thousand and eighteen was the last year Shadow Hills was in yellow on the dashboard. Big deal. You might see a collage of pictures here. We do nothing great on our own. It requires pressure and support to rise. More picture collage. We hope you enjoyed the view of Shadow Hills through the lens of Multi-Tierred System of Support, social, emotional support, academic, and positive behavior. And at this time, she's already here, I would like to bring back Dr. Spates, the proud principal of Shadow Hills.
Again, a special thank you to Mrs. Hampton and Mr. Jeru for inspiring and leading our faculty and staff, as well as supporting our students and families. Only together we rise. What questions can we answer?
I don't have a question, but I thank you all. Just looking at the suspension data over the last three years and seeing how drastically it's dropped, and knowing the work that you all have done is grateful. And one thing you said, you know, "Students are not giving us a hard time, they're having a hard time." Like, that really struck, so I appreciate you saying that. So, thank you, and thank you to your staff for what you all do.
Thank you. They're amazing.
And, Dr. Spates, if I may, I just want to thank you for inviting me to speak at the RISE Speaker Series. I didn't know what to expect because there was a co-person that was going to present with me. And then you said, "Do you think you can, you know, carry on the conversation alone?" I think I had a little bit of problems with that. No, I'm kidding. Of course I could. But I want to highlight one thing, that at the beginning, the kids didn't know what to expect. And then, once we got the conversation going, I really, really want to thank your students because they were well-behaved, they were attentive, the staff was very supportive, and I think the kids got my point.
They did.
Right? That they have a mission in life, and several of them came up to me and said, "I understood what you said," so thank you.
And they just spontaneously got in the line to shake his hand. We didn't ask him to do that, but everybody wanted to shake your hand, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, five. A, recognition of service for student board members. Aileen Reyes-Salmeron and Michael Acosta. Dr. Maldonado.
Well, this is a tough day for us because we get a chance to, first of all, thank our student trustees, and thank you for everything that they have done all year. In celebration of them, we have a little recognition. But I just want them to know that, you know, we get used to you guys, and then all of a sudden you leave us, right? But I do want to thank the parents also for bringing the students to the meeting. And you never know where this experience may take your child, right? Because we have had students actually join, for instance, the community college and became trustees at the community college. And so, best of luck to both of you. I know I will still see you. And at this point, I'd like to introduce our Director of LCAP Charter Oversight and Palmdale Promise, Dr. Cervano. Please, come up.
Okay, good evening, Board President Hunt, Board of Trustees, both of our current student board members and our new student board members, Superintendent Dr. Maldonado, Cabinet and Audience Members. Good evening. Today, as Dr. Maldonado shared, is a bittersweet day, but it is a special evening in the Palmdale School District. We wish to thank our outgoing student board members for their year of service, as well as formally swear in our two new student board members. First, we will present a plaque and share our thoughts on our very dedicated outgoing student board members. If you both could join me here at the front, I would appreciate it. Thank you. Aileen Reyes-Salmeron and Michael Acosta. These two students have sat on the dais this past year representing the students of the Palmdale School District. They have represented well and have made their voices heard. On behalf of our district, I thank you for your service and wish you both the best as you finish out your school year and go on to make a difference in your respective schools. Let's give them another round of applause. Okay, so before we say goodbye, let's hear a few words from both Aileen and Michael. Surprise, I didn't tell you were doing this. Always, always a surprise, but that's okay because you both handle yourselves so well. So, let's, also, if you can share one- So let's, also, if you can share one piece of advice for your next board members, what would you share with them? So Eileen, we'll have you go first.
Hello, everybody. Good afternoon. My name is Eileen. I am a current student board member. I have served this whole year, experiencing and learning very closely and a little more deeply into the board and the school district, learning many things from doctor. And I just want to thank each and every one of you guys because every time that you visit me, you guys are so kind to me. And you guys always express yourselves as if you care truly. You guys always express yourselves as always simply that caring and always asking me questions about my school year. And I'm so glad that you guys are truly kind. You guys are very welcoming because we are kids. We're kids. I'm a kid. I'm a teen. We're kids. And to consider that you guys are adults, and sometimes kids are very annoying. I consider myself annoying. You guys are very welcoming. You guys are very kind. And I appreciate that so much about you guys. And to our new student board member, America, I advise that you talk to each and every one of these people here on the board and even from the audience. Speak to many people from the school, the students and staff, teachers. Always try to get their insights. And even when you get their insights, also go to administrators because students like to complain. I've complained a lot. But I always try to first go to my teacher. If my teacher says something, she'll say, "Go to your counselor." I go to my counselor. I get more insight from my counselor. And then I go to Dr. B, our principal. And then we kind of sort things out, and we talk about stuff, and we talk how to better the situation that was complained about. So that's my, that's my advice to you.
And now, we'll hear from Michael.
Hi. So I didn't know I had to speak today, so I couldn't prepare anything. But it was an amazing experience. I'm gonna carry it out through the rest of my life and think about all the wonderful things that have happened to me. None of this could have happened without the support of all of the board members, my parents, that are sadly not here right now. And my piece of advice, write everything down beforehand because I have it memorized, but then I need to write it down the last five seconds, and it sucks, so.
Okay, so you'll have a seat there. Okay. So thank you, Eileen and Michael. We are again thankful for your service and your commitment to your school community. I would also like to thank our ASB advisors, Brian Tanner, Claudia Rojas, Corinthia Smith, Jody Blin, Liseth Tejada, Michael Poattu, Pamela Preza, Scott Zuccaro, Tim Hall, and Violetta Buonvelos for their hard work with our student leaders. Without their efforts, ASBs would not happen. I would also like to thank Tim Hall for all of his hard work with our ICC students, that's Intercommunications Council, and our student leadership. So now, we'll speak on the new student board members. The process of choosing a student board member is as follows. A student must be a middle school student in the 7th grade or a high school student in the 9th through 11th grades. To be a student board member, they must fill out an extensive application and be approved by their principal. We want to, at this time, officially congratulate America Magaña Juanosto and Miley McRory and welcome them as the 2025 student board members. So I will turn it over to Dr. Maldonado.
Thank you. Item B, swearing in of new student board members, America Magaña Juanosto and Miley McRory, by Dr. Maldonado, Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Maldonado.
And Board President, I'm gonna ask you to help me with this, if you don't mind. All right, board members, cabinet. It is my pleasure to introduce America Magaña Juanosto. I'd like for her to come up here. Are you a little bit nervous?
Yes.
No. You're gonna get to know everybody up there, okay? So I would like to read a little bit about America. She is a junior in the 11th grade at PACS. She previously attended Dos Caminos. So you're fully bilingual, right? In the Dual Immersion Program. She served as a vice president of her class and will serve as a vice president in 2026. Also represents PACS and the Intercommunication Council. She plays the violin. Oh, wow, board members. She also is a member of Los Juárez Mariachi. She is also an AP Scholar and has earned at least three or higher test scores on AP exams. Which ones were those? Did you take Spanish? What else?
AP Language and Culture, AP Literature, and AP World History.
Wow, that's amazing. She is honored and feels privileged to have the opportunity to serve and serve as the voice of the students, represent all of her friends at school, and is now going to be a board member with us. Welcome on board, okay? Congratulations. I'm gonna administer the oath in a minute, but I'll have our Board President introduce the second student, okay?
All right, and I would like to introduce and welcome up Miley McRory. Welcome. Miley is a 7th grader at Shadow Hills Engineering and Design Magnet Academy. She is a student promise ambassador and is a recent recipient of the Kiwanis Citizen of the Month Award. Miley previously attended Quell Valley for elementary school. Miley is also in Avid and the Yearbook Class. She is very passionate about track and field and has been to the Junior Olympics twice. Yes. She is excited to help boost student voice, to help them feel more like they belong, to create a positive learning environment, connecting communities, and prioritizing students' emotional and mental health. Welcome, Miley. Thank you.
Okay. So as part of the democratic process, one of the things you have to take is the oath of office, okay? We try to make it as official as we can. So both of you, welcome on board. Put your left hand on the Bible. This is the Bible right here. And raise your right hand and repeat after me, okay? You can follow along right here. I state your name.
I, Miley McRory.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion and that I will, will, let's do that again. See, even I have a hard time with it. And that I will, will faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter. Congratulations. Welcome on board. Audience, everybody, give them a big applause.
Now, you both realize you're my bosses, right?
Literally.
I think this gentleman here says, "I can have a meeting with Dr. Maldonado anytime." So absolutely.